Okay, we are, um, give you a three second countdown. So, three, two, one.
Recording in progress.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to, uh, the CIO Township Planning Commission meeting for March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. And, um, I want to have everyone rise for the plan to believe.
The allegiance to the rights of the United States of America. The Constitution of the Republic for which stands one nation, a majority, indivisible, indivisible, and just as for all.
Right, recall, Secretary Chang.
Okay, Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Sharma.
Here.
Commissioner Reiser.
Here.
Commissioner Hyde.
Here.
Commissioner Chang, here. Commissioner Culbertson.
Here. All right, um, adoption of the agenda. We do have one agenda change, and that is, uh, Mandy Grual, emailed me, uh, late, uh, hi, late this morning, and said she was ill with the flu and would not be able to do it. So, um, we're gonna work on rescheduling her presentation. And then, um, I think if, if, if people could, if we could also, um, move up just the approval of the minutes, and that'll give me time to pull up the presentation now that I've got connected to Zoom. Um, and, and that would be the only other change, um.
You want to move it up to?
So.
Currently, now.
I would move the agenda, with the exception of moving the, uh, minutes up to, uh, right now.
Okay. So don't move the minutes up?
Well, yeah.
Oh, go ahead. Okay.
With the exception of moving it up.
Okay, great.
And striking Mandy's.
And, yeah, striking.
Presentation. I would support that.
All right, um, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved as amended. Um, then, uh, we're moving to public comment. Um, I'll open public comment at seven oh eight. And, uh, people wishing to address the planning commission on matters, um, we don't have a public hearing this eve- evening, so on any matter, um, uh, on, uh, on the agenda or, uh, a prior, uh, matter. Um, such, uh, presentations are, uh, shall be limited to three minutes, except for a representative or a spokesperson of an organization. She'll have five minutes. So, uh, we'll start with anyone who is in township hall that would like to address the planning commission, and then move online.
There's one person.
Do you have one person in attendance? Welcome. All right.
Happy to be here with you.
Pleasure here. Anyone online?
We have several people online, but no one's hand is up presently.
All right.
So you can wait a moment.
Uh, communications and correspondence. Um, I did receive, um, two, um, uh, by, little bios from, um, two people that would like to, uh, volunteer for the environmental sustain- sustainability task force. And we can do something under reports. Um, it was, um, Norm Roller and Elizabeth LaPorte.
Elizabeth who?
LaPorte. L-A and then capital P-O-R-T-E. Okay, and moving on to presentations. Oh, minutes, yes.
I would move the minutes from our last min- uh, last meeting, move their approval.
Is there support? Support from Commissioner Hyde? All right, uh, any other corrections or comments on the minutes? You guys are just so friggin' fast. All right, hearing done. Um, all those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, please, yeah, any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved as submitted.
And, and no one raised their hands. They're all set.
Okay, um, oh, yeah. I moved to closed public comment, sorry. Um, so moved by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Reiser. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, uh, public comment is closed at seven eleven with a few interruptions in there. Okay, thank you. All right, so, um, this evening, um, what, um, I'm planning to do, just, uh, we thought we'd be a little further with our, um, drafting of our, the, the final plan. Um, we just got last Monday approval to, um, hire the person doing the graphics. And, um, also got, uh, the template that we are going to be using. So we didn't get as far as we had hoped we would. However, tonight, there are, um, kind of three things that I wanna go over. One is, um, I've kind of done a condensed list of kind of the, the near term, um, action steps that each of the groups have come up with. And then there's the part of the plan that we really need some input on is the implementation strategy. Um, and we can talk about that. And then the other item is since the trustees are looking at the budget, um, wanna go, uh, go over some of the things. One, from a planning commission standpoint and an environmental sustainability standpoint, um, of the budget, for the budget. And I'm, and what I'd like to do too is, um, we have, hopefully, we have some other, um, trustees or, or, um, other members who are in different commissions and so forth. And what I'd like to do, because this is a working session, I'd sort of like to, you know, if people want to contribute to the discussion, if you're online, if you could just raise your hand, and, um, so that it can be kind of a discussion rather than, uh, a presentation. Can, do you think you can handle that, Doug?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, and that, and, yeah, so it's sort of a, more of a, it'd be nice if everyone in this room and we could talk, but we'll, we'll do it, um, online. So, um, stay with me for just.
Near term goals versus the second, and then the budget.
Yeah, so near term goals, uh, kind of an organizational strategy, and then the, the budget. Okay.
Budget.
For the ESTF, for the environmental sustainability.
So, I mean, do we have a baseline, uh, near term goals established?
Yeah, we have, well, we have, uh, the recommendations from the groups, so I'm gonna pull those up.
Okay.
Right now. Just for. Okay, so I'm gonna share this, and hopefully, people can read it okay. Oh, I have to, am I up as a?
Analyst.
Analyst, Doug? Okay, I'm rejoining. Okay, I, I am sent in this, Jody, that's really cute. Oh, boy.
Should be able to share your screen.
All right.
I have a request.
Yes.
Since I'm sitting in the room with the presenter, I can do this. Can you go into presentation modes that it makes it as large as possible for this?
I can, I can make it large.
Why do you bother, Hyde?
Well, not that way. You know, you go into a presentation mode.
Yeah, it, it should.
Yeah, you're making the cells bigger.
Yeah, but that's, that'll make it, that's the only way to really make it bigger. Okay, and we can, we can look at, yeah, actually, 'cause it's, there is. All right, so I, what I'd like to do is kind of go through some of these, and if, um, um, I've forgotten anything, people just raise your hand and, and so forth. So what I took are some of the things that would be near term goals that we wanna get started on for sure, um, as soon as possible. And it, and these are the different, the buildings. So we have energy buildings and infrastructure. Um, and a lot of these are, um, zoning updates and, and that type of thing. So, uh, solar zoning update that would, um, look at solar as a primary use. So we would be prepared to, um, do community solar, uh, and we can have the discussion about whether we wanna entertain utility sales scholar at all. But, um, there has been a bill introduced now into the Senate in Michigan to allow for community solar. So that would be, that would be great.
This is to, the, the ordinance or the zoning would be to determine where in the township.
Yeah, what kind of zoning and, yeah, and what kind of setbacks, what size lot requirements. And there's a whole series of resources that, um, the catalyst communities have put online, um, for us to use as resources for that. Um, so there are, um, good resources. Um, an engineering specification update, that's looking at, um, our, you know, utilities and our engineering specifications for our pathways and trails and so forth from, um, to, do you need that to be a little larger? I can make it larger, yeah.
I was able to expand the screen, but I guess it fits the whole.
Oh, okay, great. All right, um, i- so that would be like, uh, low embodied concrete, looking at urban wood utilization for the pathways, um, and some other things. And talking with OHM, they did say it's been, you know, a, a bunch of years be- since they updated their specifications. Um, we have not done, we've done an energy audit on township hall. Um, we have not done an energy audit on the fire station, 'cause we wanted to make sure we had a year of energy data on, um, after we did the addition. Um, and we can do that now. Um, you know, set, uh, renewable goals and, um, kind of identify some, uh, potential for community solar with sites. Whether those be, um, you know, uh, obviously township owned sites, first of all, and then perhaps some other sites that would make it, uh, an economical community solar site. Um, work with our, um, uh, start working on a facility transition plan, uh, decarbonization plan as we replace equipment, um, and, um, you know, HVAC equipment, uh, uh, water heaters, all of those things. Um, we start looking at, um, you know, electrification and any kind of, um, uh, what shall we say? Um, uh, panel upgrades that we need. There's gonna be a boatload of money coming through for some of these things, especially for municipalities. So, yeah, if we, if we are prepared, then, then we can act on it, yeah.
Is this water reg- uh, flow rate regulations too, or is this mostly electric?
It's, it's mostly, um, electric, yeah. Um, and then the other good news is the, um, the energy code is being adopted, hopefully. It, the way it's, um, set for adoption right now includes what's called the zero code for, uh, voluntary, um, adoption. So that means, uh, we could adopt the zero code, which just for new construction of the township, which would mean any big renovations we would do or new construction, we would design, so, um, to the energy code plus commit to, um, renewable energy for that, um, building.
So you said, large, not necessarily new, but it could be, um, refurbished building?
If it is a, if, the way the energy code gets, uh, with renovations, it, it has to be a certain, uh, amount of the building that you're renovating for the energy code update to come into effect, yeah.
I was thinking of three hundred North Z.
Oh.
Because that's gonna be a, a big renovation if they have to rework.
Um, this would not, this would only be for township.
Oh, township?
Facilities, facilities. We can't, it, the interpretation is that individual jurisdictions can't adopt it for, you know, developments. We could only do it.
That has to be a county wide?
That has to be a statewide. That may be challenged, that, Ann Arbor may, um, see if they can challenge that in court.
Can we do it, can we tie it to PUD approval?
Yes.
Okay.
We definitely can do that. Yep.
Get your foot in the door.
So, uh, interesting, so, and if we go to the next point on Road of the Thirteen, but basically, the township cannot have enforced in new buildings certain standards around faucets and all that?
No, there is a state mandated, uh, both building code and energy code. And right now, there isn't a provision to do any kind of stretch codes.
So this would be self-imposed township building.
Correct, so that, you know, and part of that is trying to promote other people doing it too, including developers. But then the other thing is, um, what we can do though is, uh, we have a set of thing, of, uh, criteria that have to be, uh, submitted for site plans. And we can, you, you, we've already been asking people how they're gonna meet the, um, carbon neutrality goal, twenty thirty-five in our community. But we can also ask them for, uh, we can ask them for whatever information. So we can ask them for their, uh, water and energy performance targets. And that will automatically make, you know.
And bring it up for discussion.
Exactly, exactly. And then with the PUDs, you know, we have some other things, um, around, you know, if you're gonna do a PUD, we can add other requirements. So that's, that's sort of the strategy I'm thinking, and we can hopefully have Ann Arbor challenge that and adapt, adopt it as a voluntary, uh, mandatory appendix and see what happens.
So has that been passed?
Um, it is in JCAR right now, um, and if they don't act on it, it goes, um, for the governor to, it, it gets the great seal. And, um, if they, uh, they may do a public hearing on it, but it hasn't, and nothing's been scheduled yet, and that's.
But it's passed the city council.
It's passed, oh, you mean Ann Arbor?
Yes, the Ann Arbor initiative.
Threatening.
No, I, I, they, they've, they're very interested, but they're, it isn't on the agenda yet.
So is that something that the state, are they even talking about that?
Well, it, it would be great if the state would adopt it for their buildings. But the state is adopting it as a voluntary appendix, and the way that works with the code is you can design to it, but it's not a mandate. Kind of weird.
They're not interested in mandating it right now.
Right now.
No, but they're allowing it in case a municipality wants to require those for PUDs.
Well, we can't require.
Yeah, well, yeah, and it, it will get tested in the court probably if somebody does make it a mandate. I'm not sure CIO wants to do that, can, we hopefully rely on Ann Arbor or somebody else to do that. So, so those are, it's really looking at where we can put renewable energy, you know, set up our renewable energy kind of targets, um, for where we think it's possible. Um, you know, specify, uh, our, our own, uh, specifications, updating those, and doing what we can, um, to promote, um, mid-zero in PUDs.
So that's the near term items.
Those are the near term. And then there are a slew of existing resources to communicate, and, you know, and I did not spell education right. That's really bad, isn't it? And I copied it over and over again. All right, that's, that's cool, cute. Um, so in other words, we can bring Ann Arbor Solarise and, and promote it in our community. We can promote all the DTE, um, uh, incentives, the, uh, yeah, there's just an ocean of things, um, to share with the community now. So that's, I keep holding these because education and communication is really how we can, um, implement this plan. It, it really, really, um, is keyed on that. Go ahead with what you were gonna say. Um, mobility and transportation. Um, one thing, um, we talked about, and this has to do with the structure of, of who owns transportation. As in, you know, we just, um, reorganized the parks, pathways, and preserves, and we have a roads committee, but we do not have anyone that's really looking at holistic planning for transportation, including public transit.
So you say, who, you mean who in the township?
Who in the township, yep, who in the township, you know, and there, and that's, um, also, uh, Watts, uh, I don't know who's representing us on Watts. Nobody, and SEMCOG is another kind of transit oriented planning group. So, yeah, we have, uh, we have a little gap there. Um, this is.
Wouldn't it be a road to NPPP or PPP for the pathways and the trails to get from, you know, they wanna do a, for lack of a border to border trail, they've got this trail coursing through the township they wanna link up, and that would be PPP. But then there's also road stuff too.
Right, roads and everything in the right of way, and, um, yeah, so whether it becomes a part of the roads, if it's transportation and roads or something like that, um, or, you know, that, that would be one way of doing that.
Who has the authority? Is that what you're getting? Who's ta- who takes the lead?
Who takes the lead on transportation planning? Uh, you know, that's right of way planning, you know, sidewalks, all those, it kind of. Uh, uh, things in the right of way, yeah.
So really paths and, and parks are outside of that.
No, they're in the right of way though.
Sometimes.
Sometimes they are.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it depends.
It would, it would.
It depends on the, yeah, they're not whether.
Right, yeah, so, so that to me is a little, that's worth a lot of, some discussion about how we do it, because obviously it's important, especially if we have a public transportation village coming up, and, um. Mm-hmm, or maybe, um, and then also, it, um, EV charging and bike infrastructure zoning update. Do we, right now, we don't require, um, you know, any kind of protected bike storage, or there may be, you know, and looking at numbers and so forth, um, so that's a zoning update.
What about bike lanes? Like, kinda like stop at the, you know, the Ann Arbor city limit.
That would be.
Liberty and CIO, CIO Church, do they, I don't know if there are bike lanes on.
No, no.
Kinda ends it.
Uh, and that's, that is, that whole planning is a part of that transportation. And say, uh, should I say this? Um, w- working with the, also working with the road commission to try and, uh, look at their standards for roads, because there's another road standard that's out there that's a, a narrower, more environmentally friendly road. Um, you know, things like that.
Because it's less blacktop, or because it has bike lanes on it?
It's, well, it's.
Less, slower traffic.
Narrower lanes.
It's narrower and, yeah, and it, it, it depends on what it serves, like it's a neighborhood kind of, of road. Um, then looking at, um, uh, a planning for our fleets and, um, uh, all the equipment, um, that we use. And then again, uh, there's an ocean of information out there about EVs, purchase of EVs, um, you know, uh, that we can share with the, the community. Oh, sorry, what do you want me to do?
She wasn't gonna interrupt you.
Okay, um, so then materials, waste, and circular economy. And, um, right now, only like single family or townhouse, rural house, whatever, have, um, recycling. And so really looking, so for instance, um, CIO Farms does not have recyc- access to recycling. People in multi-family do not have access to recycling. Um, our business community does not have, unless they pay for it. Um, and so the idea would be to work with Calverts to have at least a monthly kind, uh, recycling, and also take some things like Styrofoam and so forth that, uh, GFL doesn't. Um, then, uh, look, uh, work toward a central or multi-site, um, compost. Um, and there's been some s- talk about the Renz Farm and possibly having some other ones close to some other multi-family. Um, then the, the idea about working with Recycle Ann Arbor, um, to have sort of the circular economy, industrial parks, uh, tax, um, reduction status, um, uh, urban wood reutilization, um, and then looking at, uh, requiring a certain percentage of construction demolition to be recycled, both with, um, uh, township projects, but also, um, if that could be a requirement for developers. Um, then we have an awful lot of, um, um, resale kind of shops and, uh, opportunities in CIO, and just making sure we communicate those resources. And then it, it's also, um, you know, educating our staff to make sure we're recycling everything, everything we can in, um, in the, the township operations too. Okay, I'm gonna move to the other side of this sheet. Okay, regenerative agriculture and local food systems. And this is one, it was, it's really interesting writing up, um, I think there's, there's a lot going on in CIO, and, um, Tim Redmond did a really good job, um, but there's a, there's a lack of data out there. Um, what size farms do we have? What are they producing? Um, and then also reviewing our policies and ordinance for barriers and incentives to local food. Um, like, we're gonna be talking with someone tomorrow, or Thursday, Thursday, or is it tomorrow? It's tomorrow, right? It's this week. On, on, uh, they're doing kind of local meat, um, processing. And we don't have, uh, we're trying to figure out where that can go and how do you support that kind of thing.
Farms, you get their prepackaged, you know, their packaged beef free from the chicken.
Yeah, and there might be some other things that we discover in talking with farmers that, you know, how can we help promote, um, you know, that local food system?
You know, I received something from the federal government regarding, was I farming on my land?
Oh, good, sort of a survey? Interesting.
I think I've heard it before, 'cause you said you didn't.
Not our business, I'm sure.
I like that approach, yeah. Uh, you know, so that, and then a lot of this is just communicating, there are a lot of existing opportunities out there, and then educating people on, um, you know, uh, the local food access.
Pulling the farmers into the discussion.
Exactly, exactly, and, um, yeah. Exactly, exactly. And um, yeah, and and just.
Can I understand this? Pulling the farmers into this discussion, what kind of discussion would that be? Can it just uh give you some uh? I do, I'm struggling with the point here, uh, in meeting our sustainability goals. Where will this discussion go?
Put it this way, if if we're buying locally, we're not having to transport it. We're not, we're not buying processed. Packaged beef, chicken from across the state or across the country. And so we're saving fuel that way. We may not count towards our credits, but it will help the country type of thing. So that that's a minor thing, but buy local. Support your local farmer too, it would help the township.
So speaking practically, I don't think many CIO township residents, including especially me. Has the time to go to a farm. So shouldn't we be talking about how the township can drive. A farmer's market somewhere so that these individuals can come and sell their produce. I'm not going to these farms. I'm not. I really am not. I've been trying for the last five years, by the way. I've been trying for five years to go. I have not made it here. Did the White Lotus Farm somewhere here.
They were, they delivered to my doorstep.
Fine, but I don't, uh, but that's very good. So I think that should be a part of dialogue.
Mm hmm, okay.
How can, uh, uh, how can, see, you said earlier on in the discussion.
Like vegetable stands or fruit much?
Whatever we do, whatever we do, in our part of the lot, here, that's our territory, right?
Yeah, like a farmer's market.
Yeah, this is our territory.
Wednesday morning farmer's market.
Sunday morning, whatever. So, earlier on in the discussion, I asked the question that can we drive crabs, this and that? You said, no, it's a state mandate. I mean, we we can't, we can't override that. So that's out of the window. We can't drive builders to have uh. Efficient faucets, you said. I mean, that's what I understood, right?
But but they already are required to, but we can.
Unforced them.
I mean, they're required to have a certain efficiency of their faucets by the plumbing code.
Okay.
It's just not like, if you, if you look at WaterSense, there are improvements over code that you can employ. So by asking uh, let's say a um, a developer coming in. We want your water performance targets and your energy performance targets. It gets them thinking about those things and then we can say, have you considered?
Okay, but I mean.
But we can't force it.
You gotta say you need to conform to lead standards or whatever, you can, okay.
Accept it in a a PUD situation.
Good, okay. So anyway, so again, food and thought, I mean, this is, uh, if you wanna talk to the farmers, they'll say, sure. Yeah, more than happy to talk, but talk is obviously of no consequence.
Well, I think what it is, is one, what are the barriers to, uh, you know, the the local market? How can we support that? For instance, the BiProtect Sell is an excellent tool that we've got um to uh assist. Uh, young farmers, just starting farmers. There there are a bunch of things.
Whatever, yeah, and 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 the township wants to drive the sales of these produced from these farmers. And this is what we can do. The rest is up to the farmers and the public.
Right, so you need to educate both.
Uh, no, bring them together, not educate. I mean, I don't think.
It's part of the communication then?
Communication is the word. Yeah, anyway, moving along.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Um, key things around the water. Um, one is the groundwater protection piece. With uh continuing to support the work with that card does. And um then support the other, one of the initiatives, and this is a sort of a statewide initiative. They're trying to get legislation that would require periodic septic system inspections because right now it's only point of sale. And um, and that's one of the um legislative agendas of uh here in River Watershed Council at this point. And the county is.
More regulation?
Yes, more regulation. Um, what it is, is um, we have a lot of um septic systems. That are very close to our waterways and uh we have long, I mean, people in CIO tend to live here a long time. And if you do not have a periodic inspection of your septic system, it could be contaminating groundwater or surface water.
And it's not new regulation, it's it's enforcing current ones by doing the inspection.
I mean, you're supposed to be maintaining your your septic system and having it periodically inspected, um, but.
Not having it periodically inspected, it's definitely maintaining it.
Yeah, okay, so those are, those are a couple of key things from water. And then green infrastructure and natural ecosystems is. Is actually uh coming up with a tree canopy baseline for CIO Township. Uh, looking at its health and uh do some uh planning uh for expansion. So part of this is expanding um a canopy where we can have it, connecting the canopies. But also looking at where are there, where is there a lack of tree canopy cover in the township? And how do we promote that? And that might be um the use of our tree. And identifying, you know, one, residential areas and maybe then commercial areas um that don't have a lot of tree cover. And there's a whole bunch of information on health and um uh multiple benefits from tree cover.
Yeah, we're losing a lot of trees on Marshall Road without beautiful canopy.
Yeah, go ahead.
About ten years ago, we did a study for the township called Greenways Plan.
I think so, maybe we should pull that one out.
Think of a fair amount of information that we're gonna talk about.
Okay, okay, that'd be cool. That'd be very good too.
Got a plan for it.
Mm hmm, we got it, we got a plan for it. Let's bring it out. Um, that's why we have your, the history here. Then, this says fill stormwater ordinance and maintenance gaps. And um, this is where we have. Right now, we need to look at the line of where people need to bring their stormwater management up to. Current ordinance standards. And right now, it's, it it, you know, we just need to evaluate if that's the right place. Or if we need to push for doing it, um, you know, at a change of use or at a different. You know, uh, reconfiguration or some sort of at least improvement in in the stormwater floor. All those older developments that have very little or none.
Can we do that? Can we enforce the current code?
Well, this would, I mean, we would have to, we, if we would write it, it's it's our ordinance. It's our zoning ordinance, it's a zoning.
So, but it's a zone, and that's always, that's retroactive.
So like a, an old subdivision that doesn't have a retention time or doesn't go to a drain? Like, what do you mean?
And it would be more like if, I don't think you can say, you know, existing people, you have to come up to code that. I think that would be a little harsh, I mean. Um, but you could say, right now, it's, there's certain criteria for when you have to meet current stormwater. Management practices. So it would be, uh, it's, it's if you. Um, add a certain amount of impervious surface, you can remind me of which one. Yeah, there, it's, it it.
So is this commercial mostly over residential?
Well, this is, this is commercial, single-family residential, there is no ordinance around it. And the question is, could we have an ordinance that would require single-family residential homes to have some sort of stormwater management?
Well, single-family homes in a subdivision do.
So the HOAs.
Yeah, so that, so if you're in a development, even a private road development.
Right, private road development.
Already required. The only time it's not required is if you say you have a five acre parcel off Marshall Road or something. And this is an acreage parcel. We don't require storms or for the constructor.
So just stormwater management, so it is.
But in any, you know, any situation where there's a, 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 you know, a development, yes, they have a full load. Stormwater.
But what about uh maintenance of an existing stormwater system, like some of the older subdivisions? Um, yeah, I'm thinking of one in particular, really, that I talked about where it's filling with silt, you know, the. And there's nothing happening except water's back, you know.
We could add, so the township does have a stormwater section towards zoning ordinance. There's a little stormwater ordinance. And I don't think there's a very good maintenance provision, so that's something that could be added. Which is probably a very good idea. Now that would take some uh staff time at the township to do inspections and things like that. But I I I do work in another community that they actually do the annual. Community has a uh staff that will actually do annual stormwater inspections. So I mean, that that's, that's definitely a direction.
And then it's, it's sort of like there, uh, um, we have, you know, landscape ordinances. Um, invasive species, um, that there are some folks that are reducing the amount of turf grass. That's that you can, you know, um, have on a site. So just sort of reviewing those ordinances with that environmental lens of of where we need to, where we can. And enhance the natural ecosystem. And then here in River Watershed Council also has some model or- ordinances. And um, when we did a quick check, they seemed to be pretty happy with us, but they're also, you know, looking at. Updating some of those, those things with, uh. I don't know if we have, we can really have that P pass, but um certainly um looking at maybe a. An environmental overlay to the really sensitive, the bio reserve. The areas that are, might be affected by the plume, that type of thing. Um, so you look at. The more sensitive, environmentally sensitive areas of the township. Then resilience and emergency preparedness. Um, identify a resilient hub, resilient hub, and that is a. It is staffed in a, in emergency, whether it's when people lose power, if there's a wind event. If there's um some other issue, um, it provides um food, shelter. Heating or cooling. Um, and it it would, uh, the recommendation is that we should have one in CIO Township. Then uh, this was, there are two um kind of environmental assessments and I will um. PDF this and add it to the um, the record too. Okay, good. Yeah, so you don't have to. Um, identify areas susceptible to flooding. Um, this is one of the things that. With increasing rain events, um, areas that are currently susceptible will probably get worse.
Liberty Road.
And.
Now, how is that, how is that in addition to the flood maps that we have?
It would be knowing specific areas where flooding occurs as opposed to the flood maps. So a way of um citizens being able to report basement flooding, any sort of things that. That we may not know about because they've been dealing with it. And then it goes back to, is it a stormwater maintenance issue? Is it a, you know.
Flood plane?
A flood plane issue, is it, you know, and what can, what can the township do? To um. Yeah, yeah, there's adaptation and mitigation there.
So you're gonna say flooding, you're you're talking about like property flooding, like basements and buildings and things like that.
Right, not.
Not roads?
Well, roads would have to be, yeah, that would have to get reported to the road commission, basically. Road flooding, yeah, and they actually, on their website, have a little thing that you can report road flooding. Um, and then i- identify wind event vulnerabilities. So, um, because it's wind and water. That's sort of our climate vulnerabilities. And that would be, um, for instance. Can't do much about DTE power except for complain. Um, but make sure that we have. You know, our backup power is working. Um, where are the, the houses that may have been older? That may be more susceptible to wind damage. Um, looking at the manufactured homes that might be older and susceptible to wind damage. And how do we, you know, plan for those wind events and make sure that um, uh. We're prepared for those and is there any funding available to uh mitigate?
You're talking privately owned buildings? So we'd help try to see if there was funding available to help those people prepare.
So what would we do, um, if the whole of Marshall Road from Z to Baker caught on fire? I mean, we, we have not experienced serious drought in Michigan over the last ten years.
And that is not one of the vulnerabilities that.
Increased precipitation.
We get the increase of precipitation. Now, that doesn't mean that. Than nothing, so it, it, they're not predicting.
That's not a.
A fire area. Um, yeah, it's more wind and and water. Yeah, so those are kind of the sh- some of the short-term things that we've been discussing. And the, the plan actually goes through and uh and identifies um these in more detail. I just wanted to make sure we had kind of a, you know, uh, an idea of what people were thinking about.
And there'll be other items that'll be mid and long term that aren't on this list.
Right, yeah, so what we classified items as sort of near term, one to three years. Midterm, five to seven years, and then longer term, you know, after that, as as things that we need to do. So, I'm gonna.
Question?
Yes, go ahead.
Let's live together.
Um, I took it from the Environmental Sustainability Plan that um is a much longer form of that. It was just a summary of of some of the things that we could talk more about budget and.
Every, every one of the groups, and she showed them in subgroups there. And so every one of the subgroups. Compiled their own list and then she grabbed the. Summary from that.
So, I think one important thing, have you benchmarked other best-in-class township cities around the country, what they're doing?
Um, well, actually, we have the best-in-class city in Ann Arbor and what they're doing.
Uh, really?
Yeah, absolutely.
So the answer is.
No more, no more comments.
I mean, literally, people all over the country are looking to Ann Arbor for what A two zero is doing. Yeah, and we've, I, we've talked with Pittsfield, we looked at Royal Oak Plan, we've looked at. There were, I don't know, several um plans that the the task force looked at to see how they did them, what they did. And uh what made sense from a township perspective, because obviously we have less resources. Yeah. Okay, alright, now this is, uh, this is gonna be a little, um.
Did you wanna hold questions until?
Yeah, we can get.
When did, I mean, if there were anybody.
Oh, yeah, any hands up?
Well, I was just gonna say, um, a few moments ago, we just had a little blip on the computer.
Oh, good.
And I can no longer see the attendees. So there are, there's only two attendees and that's um. Jillian Ferry and Rob Pattinson were the last two that I saw. But now they're not showing up, so I can't tell if their hands are up or not. So if if Rob and Jillian are still here, you might, oh, Rob just popped up. I don't know. So Jillian, I don't know, I don't know, this is very odd. But we had a thing just popped up that said our internet connection was unstable. And then everyone sort of disappeared.
Oh, I see, Kathleen Brandt just came back.
It's like you're conducting a séance.
You know, this happens when we're watching Zoom meetings. Um, we'll see the, the township system freezes. And then we're fifteen seconds into the future before you start talking.
Well, um, so Rob does have his hand up.
Okay.
I'm gonna, um, so, uh, Rob, you have it, but you have to unmute yourself.
Okay, well, today, we're not on video really. Well, today, we're not on video really, you're screen sharing, so there's, you wouldn't see Rob, you wouldn't see us just sitting here without moving, which is typical, and audio freezes, so does the video.
The only person I can see right, yeah, the only person I can see right now is, is Rob Pattinson. No, I don't see any other attendees. So something happened. Maybe if you sign back on, the name will pop back up again, so.
Cause they don't have questions.
Yeah. Okay, so we're gonna get into a little organizational theory here, and this is actually from, um, Deloitte. And it talks, and it's a part of their, um, kind of consulting process for cities, villages, and townships. And it talks about, um, kind of the components that you need to be able to take on, um, governance in the project and, and so forth. And it's really, um, uh, integrators. Those are the folks are kind of in, the integrators are kind of in the center of this kind of diagram, and they're the ones that build and sustain an ecosystem by creating processes and platforms that allow multiple participants to collaborate effectively. Then you have the problem solvers, and they're the ones that actually develop solutions, um, to specific challenges. You have enablers, and I have to increase this a little bit, just read all of that, sorry. Um, they make the innovation, um, process, okay, so you can evolve what you're doing easier by providing critical resources such as skills training, data, and funding to other members of this ecosystem. You have motivators, those are the folks that create incentives to spur innovation, including tax credits, public recognition, grants, um, supportive infrastructure. And then you have the conveners, and those are the folks that assemble diverse sets of partners to collaborate, um, by conferences, task forces, ha- I don't know about hackathons, but, um, just other tools that you use to bring people together, um, to generate ideas and collaborate. Um, and I sort of wanted to, uh, introduce that so we can think of, um, you know, who's doing what and how do we, um, integrate sustainability into everything we do. We don't have, as a township, um, the resources to add sustainability. We really need, and, and you probably wouldn't wanna make it an add-on anyway, but really think about how sustainability becomes one of the metrics that you make your decisions on. Um, it isn't the only metric, obviously, but it is one of the major metrics when you're, when you're purchasing, when you're planning, when you're, um, budgeting, um, when you're, you know, sitting down at your desk and working, and hopefully, when you're going home. Um, so with that, I wanna, um, go to its team organization.
So I see that the Planning Commission has several of those silos that they fit into.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and so I kind of, uh, the, the goal would be to do, um, I don't know why I s- split the screen, it's kind of weird. Okay, uh, so what I looked at, um, is. Is the idea of, you know, some sort of leadership across the spectrum. And there's, and when I think about sustainability, I think about, there's sort of the community element, um, there's a planning element, and there's the operations element. The operations is the things that we do in township halls, SiO, utilities, grounds, you know, our facilities. Um, you know, it's sort of an internal looking facing. Then there are all the things that we do that are planning-related, and that's, you know, Planning Commission, LPSC, Roads, PPP, the DDA, Transportation, these are all folks that are planning and affecting sort of the future of the township. And then, um.
You wanna include the trustees in there?
Eh, well, I have, that, that's, they're there at the leadership approval, all of that kind of thing. But, um, and so, and then there's sort of the community aspect too. And so what I'm thinking is, how do we form a leadership team that would have, um, some folks that are, um, you know, community-facing, planning-facing, and operations? That would be a representative body, um, that would sort of lead, um, you know, the sustainability efforts across the township. And I'm just thinking, you know, these are the people who would probably need to participate in that. And when I say ambassador leads, I'm seeing, um, those are sort of, um, the motivation and education folks, those are the folks that are saying, hey, we forgot to think about, um, you know, the sustainability aspects in this decision, or, um, uh, putting together education programs. Um, and that would be for staff, so ambassadors within, you know, for recycling, for, um, you know, our oper- uh, all the operations and all the departments, you need a lead, you know, who, uh, someone who's, who's, um, you know, gone through some basic training, if you will, and also has that enthusiasm about making sustainability possible. Yeah, go ahead.
Is this team, the leadership team, where leadership sort of implies that they're paid staff?
Um, yeah, or, or.
That's, that's my question.
Yeah, and, I mean, some of the people who are members of some of the other committees, um, you know, are volunteers, so it is a combination. And then, then there'd also be community ambassadors, so those would be folks that are interfacing. Um, they go through this foundational training, and we do have the, um, training that Ann Arbor does with their ambassadors, um, on sustainability, so, um, it, and it's very good, it talks, eh, it's, it's, it's all the different, um, aspects of sustainability. And so any, you know, you have the ambassador training and, you know, other people could participate in that too, if they're interested. But the ambassadors, what their, their commitment is to be, um, you know, leads either in the township operations or leads in the community itself. And typically take on as, when they finish their training in Ann Arbor, they all take on a project. And, and, and finish some sort of project that is, that will make a difference, um, in, in the community or in the operations of where they work. And then I see we need, uh, down here is a real, um, sort of the support team. And we desperately need someone that can focus on communications. And this isn't just for sustainability, it's across the township. We really need someone who can do that. Um, and then we, we need somebody who may have some interest in policy research. We're gonna be really looking at a lot of different policies. Um, and just bringing that research so people can look at them and see what other people are doing and how to, you know, improve our policies. And then a grant writer. With the funds coming in, um, we really need to have, um, someone that can identify and work with, uh, folks to write grants.
Would this be unique to the, um, sustainability, uh, group? Or would it, would this support team, I'm talking, I'm thinking communications, the policy research and the grant writing, um, that could be, they could, the township-wide could use that.
Exactly.
Not, not just for sustainability projects, but, so it wouldn't have to be dedicated.
Exactly.
But it would be inclusive of whatever the needs are that the trustees come up with.
Yeah, and, and so, and then below that, cause I see those as, you know, supporting more than, you know, just sustainability, are the, um, Environmental Sustainability Working Groups. And I really see that continuing because, um, it, it's gonna take a lot of volunteer effort to, um, promote this within the community. And, um, we're seeing a little reorganization of, um, the Environmental Sustainability Group. Um, kind of peeling off agriculture and local food systems, because that's a, as we've, as Tim Redmond's done a lot of research on that, it really is a, almost a separate piece. And that, um, and then, uh, combining energy, buildings, utilities, water, and resilience. It's all about, y- y- you know, it, it, it could be a, um, one group. And then the green infrastructure and natural ecosystems, which really ties into, um, PPP really well and some of the other, um, you know, the parks preserves kind of thing. Um, mobility and transportation would stay on its own, there's a lot of work there, eh, um, especially community outreach around EVs and, um, and then it, because that's such a gap in the, in the township about transportation planning, um, there's quite a bit of support there. Um, and then there's, um, materials waste and, um, the circular economy. Um.
So this is the structure you're seeing where it evolves?
Moving, yeah, and this was just, um, this was sort of thinking through, cause what I'm trying to do is, as we've been putting, all the groups have come together and it's really, I'm trying to integrate what people are saying and, and, and so forth. So this is, as I'm looking at it, how it, it make, um, it's a strategy for implementation as I'm, as I'm thinking through all of this. And then, you know, just how to deal with fleets and equipment, communication, education, and outreach, ambassadors, recognition. I think we need to, you know, if people are doing stuff, we need to, um, acknowledge that and, um, uh, events. Um, and then, al- always looking at who the key collaborators are. Um, the 2030 district is, you know, is doing the benchmarking and, you know, uh, uh, and has grants and so, you know, a lot of resources available for the buildings themselves. That, but then there's, um, Recycle Ann Arbor and Warm Up for recycling. Um, the Road Commission, the Water Resources Commission here in River Watership Council, Washtenaw County Conservation District, um, MSU Extension, Watts, Semcog. You know, then we have, you know, the A2 zero initiatives, the Resilient Washtenaw initi- initiatives that are just starting to get launched, and, you know, other townships. Um, you know, Pittsfield is, is certainly already kind of out of the gate with some of their sustainability things and.
You don't have State.
Oh, yeah, Eagle, yeah. Thank you. Anybody, who else am I missing?
Vets, but I don't know how, I'm not gonna list those.
We can do the IRA, that's the Inflation Reduction Act.
I can't, I can't read all of that, do you have the Washtenaw County Resource Commission?
Yeah.
Yes. Water Resources, definitely. Um, yeah. Yep. Oh, that's it, I'll just put Ecology Center down, cause I think we should name them. Yeah, I have that one.
No, these are just, who, who, who outside of the township do we need to work with in order to make sure we're going the way we can get support, that they can support us? That's how I see it, collaboration.
Yeah, because, for instance, MSU Extension and the, um, what is it? The W Washtenaw County, um, Conservation District, I mean, their conservation district is right next door. They have all the rain barrels, they have the master garden courses, they have, you know, so there's so many things that if we just had that communications piece, we could really amplify those, yeah. What, Recycle Ann Arbor, yeah.
It's actually Calvert, they now own Calvert.
Right, I have Warm Up and our, uh, Recycle Ann Arbor.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Hard to see us there.
Yeah, they, they bought that site, and they wanna build kind of, have ideas about building out kind of, uh, recycling sustainability campus there.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
About the county home builders association.
What's that?
Home Builders.
Oh.
Which is BREG, I think, right? That's the, um, and then WCA or the, is the Contractors Association.
Yeah, I just, that is not the home builders group, so.
We have kind of a, uh, interesting corridor of, um, reused businesses along Jackson Road, and I've often thought, you know, if there's a way to sort of like promote that, you know.
Certainly, education is needed so that everybody knows where to go for what.
Or where to go to get rid of what.
And, and actually, yeah, cause there are, um, a- and, you know, it'd be fun if we had, you could have a whole Jack, you know, um, reused SiO and, you know.
Just like they have that, you know, car celebration every year, we could have a, you know, kind of a reused celebration every year.
Yep, yep.
And then one, um, thing that we were planning, I forgot to go to the near-term actions at the very top here. There are a couple things that, uh, we think that, you know, we're probably pretty good at. Um, and it, you know, is looking at those purchasing and contracting requirements. You know, these are things that aren't, they're a little time-intensive, but it's not like there's an outlay of, of a, uh, of a lot of money required. Um, also, piggybacking in October, kind of sustainability open house event with the fire open house and do, um, have activities, uh, you know, at the fire station and here, and maybe engaging the county to do some things. And so you could have a, you know, a trio of stops and, you know, keep it very family-friendly. And, I mean, you could have solar, eh, you know, we're gonna be doing with the, oh, did everyone notice we have the, the solar installation is up in the fire station?
Kind of a miss.
Yeah. Well, what's coming next is, um, the fire, um, the fire has okayed doing a native planting. So from the, um, the Z Broad Edge, um, of the solar panels all the way bu- behind the storage area, um, underneath the panels, we're gonna use a, there's a a special seed mix for under solar panels, so that's gonna be piloted. And then the, a seed mix all the way around the, um, storage facility, and then we're gonna do a native plug planting that'll be a community plant, um, in front of the solar panels between the parking lot and the edge of the solar panels. So it'll be a, um, an ongoing, um, project for people to, um, identify alternatives to turf grass.
Yep.
If you got the, the fire station energy audit complete before that October event, you could sort of use that to kind of showcase the res- the results of the audit.
Yeah, and one of the goals we already did when, um, the migraine power, um, went below regular power prices, we enrolled all the township operations in migraine power. So, um, all except for the light, the streetlights, SiO Township has seven streetlights, two of which are not LED.
You know, if it's good weather, you could combine with something like Marshall Park too, it's not, it's within walking distance of the fire station.
Oh, Marshall Park, uh-huh, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I think Anna, um, Cohen would be happy to collaborate on something.
And maybe we could even get the Flyers out doing something. That would be kind of fun.
So just try to engage the, the township and community in what's going on and what we're thinking?
Exactly, that's, that's the key. I mean, cause the, hopefully, we'll work the paint plan through adoption and this could be, um, you know, I, I'm thinking, if any of you guys have ever gone to the Green Fair that they have in Ann Arbor, a mini kind of thing, only with as many hands-on, kid, family-friendly kind of activities that we can do. So that's the thinking. All right, now on to the budget.
So we're down with a plan, right? Or is this a budget for this?
This is the budget for, looking at the budget for this coming year.
Okay, and that was why the near-term things were put in front of us.
No, no, so.
Okay, go ahead.
So is this, these are, is, is there gonna be a plan that has like narrative, like a, like a, like we used to see?
Oh, actually, hang on, and let me pull this up. I can, I can show you kind of the.
This is more like highlights.
These are highlights, yes, these are highlights.
She had hoped to pull everything together, but.
Okay, no, I just wanna make sure.
Yes.
It's still gonna come before us?
Yes, it still has to come before us. And what we're gonna do is, we're gonna put it on. And what we're going to do is we're going to put it online. And April, April sixth, our April meeting is going to be a listening session. And we'll probably have, I'll come here so people can come in person or come or stay online. And it is April, yes, April sixth.
That's a planning commission or is that?
That's CYO, that's an environmental, it's a Thursday night, it'll be.
It's here.
Yeah. And so we'll do a listing session, it'll be on Zoom, but also have an option here if there isn't another meeting. Check on that. Okay, so just to give you an idea. I'm going to reshare in a second here before we get into the budget.
Was the near term in the organizational strategy part of your presentation that you just did?
The near, the organizational strategy is.
Near term goals and organizational strategy you just did.
I just did that, yeah. So this is the beginning of the Climate Action Plan, so you can kind of get an idea of what it looks like. After, you know, a vision, we did a vision statement. And this is sort of a quote from the resolution that the trustees passed. And hopefully we can either have a supervisor's letter or city manager's letter, something like that. This is looking at the table of contents and a summary, sort of background information, how to read the plan, overview. And then these are the working groups, which are really the focus topics. And the action items. And then sort of a glossary of terms and some appendices.
This is what you're going to massage or work into?
Yeah, so the working groups themselves wrote all these pieces here. And so what it's going to look like, if we come down, you know, this is sort of.
Royal Oaks?
Well, this is, this is actually all of ours. You know, sort of talking about where our missions come from. This one is, this is the county stuff, okay. And then going through, each of these sectors get color coded. And then we start the different focus areas that go through. This hasn't been, all the information hasn't been put in here, but it has sort of a definition of what it covers. And this is what those action items will look like. You know, so energy and buildings, this is, you know, sort of a main strategy and then the actions and whether it's long term or near term. And so that's the, sort of the basis of the plan. So the writing is pretty much done, but we really need to get the.
You just closed out?
Yeah. I want to go back to my.
I would.
Yeah, go ahead.
To interject, I looked at the township meetings calendar and we're the only, the task force is the only meeting for that.
Okay, good, so I'll ask Chrissy to reserve this room. So I'm gonna.
Give it to her.
Yeah, pop the budget. Okay. You know, the, so looking at the budget going ahead, and these are the things that I communicated to our city manager and the, or township manager, yes. And the, and it's really hard, I have to say, well, looking at that budget to figure out whether it got in there, any of this got in there or not. So our trustee representative and any, I think you said Jillian was online.
Would it be under planning? I think Jillian's coming.
Okay. So one is, and this doesn't have to happen next year. We did get a, there are three old rooftop units on this building and we did get a.
Solar units?
There, oh, rooftop, there are HVAC, heating, ventilating and air conditioning units. And we did get.
You don't have any solar rooftop of township, Paul.
Sort of replacing those and going into heat pump, a heat pump system and also a system that meets current indoor air requirements. That's the, yeah, that's the kicker right there is meeting those and having reasonable controls. The fire station, we can do that through a grant, the energy audit. Then, I don't know, Doug, if you thought, have thought through anything on the Jackson Road Corridor study of budget number to do that?
Yeah, I've got just a couple of basic, you know, ideas, but yeah, just, you just want, not just want a a number, placeholder number.
A placeholder number, yeah. So Doug's going to think through that. And then a start on, I listed a lot of the updates to the, our zoning ordinances. And what I had asked for is about $10,000 to start that process because it's going to take more than Doug. Otherwise, we'll be, be working on that for about 10 years. So, you know, this would, this is sort of that list of short term items.
Are you looking at that?
Oh, I forgot to share, didn't I? Jeez, oh Pete, hang on, thank you.
I'm going to look at that.
There we go. That should work, jeez, oh Pete. Thank you. Actually, one of the comments.
So these are budgetary items then?
Yeah, and now I can't close out this. Yeah, so these are, this was, let me go back to the top so you guys can see that. So this was, you know, sort of facilities, the fire station energy audit by grant and somehow planning for that HVAC replacement, which is, there are two things with that, that it's a little bit disruptive to do that and it's expensive. And it also includes updating the electric panel.
Is the township due to have them replaced already?
They're already causing, they're past their life expectancy.
I don't think I know how to say this, but you're putting it into the budget for the sustainability.
No, this was just something that I gave to the manager. It does, it is under sustainability in that it's in going, moving toward an electrification process. But anyway, that's, it's, that's the big number. Okay, Jackson Road Corridor Study, we have to get a block number from Doug and then $10,000 to start. And so what I'm trying to do is identify things above and beyond the normal planning process because we have, we're budgeted for the normal planning kinds of things.
So this is under the Planning Commission's budget and the task force is under the Planning Commission?
What?
Well, I'm just taking in what you're saying.
Yeah.
This is kind of dumping a lot of stuff on the Planning Commission budget.
Oh, yeah, yeah. But so for instance, when we updated the master plan, we had an additional budget for that. So yeah, updating all these ordinances, that, that is above and beyond.
That's what we do, no, we do that, we're doing that right now.
But to do.
But we don't do HVAC heat pump system for the township.
No, we don't do that.
Hall and a myriad of things that I see upon your list.
Yeah, this is planning and sustainability.
Or the fire energy audit.
Those, that's up under facilities. That's planning.
So we have a question from someone in the public.
Yes.
So Kathleen Brandt, you now have the floor.
Uh, yes, this is Kathleen. Uh, this is all very, it's very, I'm not, the words not coming to me, but anyway, it's all honorable. I don't disagree with any of these actions to do, to save the planet. I mean, that's the best way to say it. But what I don't understand is, when did the Board of Trustees approve a budget or the budgeting process for the Sustainability Task Force? I've never seen this come before the board as something within their purview.
They're doing the budgeting process right now?
That's not the question, Jan, that's not the question. The question is, when did the Board of Trustees give the Sustainability Task Force the ability to budget and spend money?
They don't, they don't have that, they don't have that.
Exactly, that's my point.
Are they spending money?
No, the only money that we're spending was a request, you know, from the Planning Commission to be able to do the graphics for the plan.
So therefore, they do not have a budget, per se.
Correct.
Right, so you can't state that they have a budget which does not exist, which has never been brought before the Board of Trustees at all. And this is all very aggressive. Again, I'm all for saving the planet. I wish on the national news, when they report storms, that they would say, all of those storms are related to global warming. But procedurally, you have, seems to have established a whole new leadership team or proposing that is completely separate from the existing org structure and elected officials within the township. So I don't know how that works with the existing structure and authorization that elected officials have to do their jobs. I don't see how you can have a whole separate leadership team, these groups. I'm not opposed to it, don't get me wrong. I mean, I would even volunteer to push some of these programs, but it seems to be a leadership that's completely removed from the Board of Trustees. So I don't understand that.
Yeah, it isn't removed from the Board of Trustees. It's a, it's an organizational leadership team that focuses on sustainability. So for instance, it would include trustees, probably the manager would need to be, the township manager would need to be on it. And either both the clerk and supervisor or one of them being sort of, and the trustee being the community facing person. So I don't see the leadership, I see the leadership team maybe meeting quarterly and really, you know, so that there's a good communication with what's happening across all of the sectors. It's sort of like a reporting mechanism, yeah.
And is it fair to say that nothing can be done on this team without the trustees authorization?
Certainly no spending of money.
Money, and, and the trustees, I mean, this plan will work its way up to the trustees.
For their approval.
For their approval, but.
Everything would have to.
What we're trying to do through a couple of things with this budget, since you're going through the budget process now, and I did email this into the manager and so forth. And it's just hard when I look at the budget to see if any of this is in here.
I haven't seen it where I would.
Yeah, where it would be. So that's a sort of a question, if, if we want to make some progress, and it's the Planning Commission that really has to do the ordinance work, the trustees would need to do some of the other policy work. And, and then I'm, then with, I'm seeing the Sustainability Leadership Team as a way of bringing together all those planning units, you know, the LPC, the PPP and so forth. So if the Planning Commission is looking for community solar sites, there's, someone who says, well, the township owns this piece of land and, you know, you know, does the township want to put, you know, invest in solar on any of their parcels of land that aren't preserved? Or do we have to, you know?
So can I, can I interject, please?
Sure, yeah, go ahead, Kathleen, just a second.
Chairperson Culberson, I have put together a group of folks that are very concerned about how finances and staff run in CYO Township. It's called CYO Fiscally Concerned Residents. We have over 100 members. I present regularly to the board. I cannot support anything that precludes and assumes that you can input to a budget that you don't have approval or any board visibility to input into their budget anything other than planning consulting use. So I, I can't support that you put something into the budget and whether the township manager puts it in there or not, it's never gone before the board as even a process to be considered. And that's my concern. Again, not opposed to any of these things, but there should be procedures here that the board looks at it first and says, yes, okay, instead of someone else saying, this is what the board should do and therefore put it in the budget.
I think, yeah, I think we're just trying to, when you do the budget process, people ask, like me, as Planning Commission Chair, you know, for, what are your plans, what do you need funded, et cetera? And so this is, you know, the facility piece was just from a, the, a grant that we got last year to look at some very specific things. And I just wanted to make sure, and I sent along the, I think Will was a part of that presentation that the engineer did for that, for the HVAC replacement study. So it was merely a reminder that we had done this work. Here was the recommendation for the replacement. It isn't saying you have to put it in the budget, but hey, remember, folks, we did this and we have a need, a facility's need, just in case that wasn't brought up by anyone. I mean, it isn't, I'm, I'm not trying to say you have to put it in the budget. I'm saying, we did this work, there were these recommendations. The trustees should consider whether or not it fits and how they want to approach the replacement of three large pieces of equipment that wanted. Now, that is a Planning Commission, that was the work that we did on the Energy Management Grant with money that we got from the state. But it ties in with sustainability goals of making our facilities carbon neutral by 2030, which was a resolution passed by the trustees.
So process.
Yes.
The task force is making recommendations to the Planning.
Planning Commission?
The Planning Commission will be making recommendations to the trustees. It'll get approved or not?
Not approved, exactly.
So Kathleen, there is a lot of checks and balances in that equation.
And this is, and, you know.
I'm still waiting.
I, I want to make sure that, you know, we have a chance to talk about these things because this is a working session of the Planning Commission, right? Okay.
No, I, I, um, two things. The first is, I'm happy to see we're starting to think about planning. Not when the crisis comes up and we need to deal with it. So I, I'm feeling you on the planning part. And I'm not so sure that you're not correct in that in, in trying to use the Planning Commission to, for actual planning, not just considering projects that are before us. I would, I do have a question for you, what is the current Planning Commission budget?
Scroll back up.
Thank you.
Because, and the reason I ask this is because I think we need to start, the commissioners need to know what we're, what we're budgeting. Because I have been hearing rumors about curtailing our budget because we're spending too much money based upon CYO Township total budget. Let me finish, let me finish.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
So this is, this is completely, this is a different direction that we're talking. And I'm following you on it and I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. I understand the questions that Kathleen was just making.
And it is difficult with the Planning Commission budget because there's the planning. And it is difficult with the Planning Commission budget because there's the Planning Commission budget, um, that includes, um, you know, for instance, our consultants have certain hours that they are in the Township Hall.
That is our Planning Commission budget because we don't get salaries. But I just want to say, this presup, this presupposes that the Planning Commission is going to have a much larger budget.
Not mu, well, mu, not much larger. It, just like in the year that we
And I didn't, I hadn't even heard about a Jackson, let me just finish. I had not even heard about a Jackson Road study. Um, this is the first time I've heard about switching our process from what we're doing now with the committee, uh, going through ordinances, and now we're going to have that. And, um, this is the first time I've heard about the energy, uh, the fire energy audit and the Sci-O Hall heat pump HVAC system.
Yeah, that really is a Planning Commission.
That's not going to be on our play. Okay, so, um, do we know what the budget for the Planning Commission is now?
I just looked it up. The, the, um, bottom line for twenty-three, twenty-four is, I think, four oh three ninety-two.
Ninety-two?
Yeah, that's the, that's the recommended budget.
Four hundred thousand?
Yeah, four hundred and three thousand.
Four.
Close to four hundred and forty.
Did they have a close last year in the news?
Last year was, um, projected was, is four forty-three. So it was about forty thousand less than last year.
But what are we year-to-date? Twenty-twenty-three?
Fiscal year.
We've got two weeks to spend it.
Yeah, it's pretty far, it's a pretty big difference, actually. Uh, your, the actual as of two seventeen, twenty-twenty-three, um, is two eight seven. So I'm not sure what the difference is here. I don't know. It's because there's, there's the increase in consultant fees. That's where I see an increase.
The last time I looked at our budget, which was a while ago, our consultant fees take up two-thirds of that.
Yeah, the consultant fees are the, are the lion's share of planning costs, which you'd sort of expect because we've outsourced, uh, planning staffing. And, um,
And that's also all the reviews that they do. We don't see half the reviews they do.
Understand. Like the zoning administrative stuff, yeah.
The other thing here, the other piece here, which I think is part of what people may have been hearing about is a desire to try and um, adjust the fees that we collect for various planning, um, services, um, so that we are covering more of the, those consultant costs.
Yeah, I think we should be recouping that.
Well, we recoup a chunk. What are the revenues?
To talk about this particular
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, I just wanted to hear. I can pull it up and I can tell you what it says.
Do you have a sense in, just round figures? Give a sense of how much we recover?
Um, well, that is spelled out here. So the gap, um, is the negative number down at the bottom. So, um,
Which, you don't have a checklist.
Right. So it's, uh, so right now, what's, um, projected is two hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars for, uh, fees. All, all the revenue, I should say, all the revenue because it's not all fees. Some of it comes in different categories. I guess it's all different kinds of fees, but, um, there's consultant review fees, there's ordinance and then there's fees, there's private road fees, there's wetlands, ordinance, application fees. There's all sorts of different kinds of fees that we
Yeah, because that's all the things that our consultants do. Yeah. And it's also our engineering consultants because they're reviewing all of those site plans and
Yes.
and that type.
It's just not just car wash.
No.
Jan, I have, when it's my turn, I have questions about
I'm, I'm done.
What can we do to encourage individuals or encourage subdivisions and developments to get people to do more for themselves, whether that's composting, whether that's solar on the roof, whether that's chickens, whether that's, that's, I know that's a four-letter word maybe to some. Whether, whether that's clotheslines, some HOAs, uh, won't let you put a damn clothesline out. So, so is that something we should be, are there, are there some things that we should do that would get, whether it's gardens or community gardens, or what can we do, what can I do where I live that would help Sci-O? And what do we need to do to get ordinances in place to allow that? Or to let developers know, hey, we're going green here. Don't say no clotheslines or this or that. Are there some things that, in that, in that respect?
Yeah, I think, oh, definitely.
Those are those two key words, communication and education.
So, so
No, I'm talking about not letting, and I'm talking stopping HOA from doing that stuff if we think it's a bad idea for the environment.
Do we see, review, who reviews the HOA?
That we don't want to be, if it's P U D.
Um, guidelines, like not allowing solar or that kind of stuff. Do we have anything to say about those?
Typically, homeowner associations can have more strict rules and regulations. Um, I, I suppose we could look at trying to limit what they can do in their, in their master deed filings. Uh, but right now, as it stands, we have our baseline's, uh, requirements, which are typically zoning requirements. And homeowner associations can be more strict. And in many, in many cases, they are more strict.
They are because we let them. Can, can we write an ordinance that says thou shall not do this and thou shall do this other, you know?
Or you can't restrict these things or something.
It might be prospective.
For existing, a residential, uh, or new.
No, prospective, going forward, going forward. We might not be able to tell what, you know.
So that goes back to my question earlier. What can we do? And I think that time the point was, well, it's at the state level and so on. Brings us back to the same point again, in a different way.
That's for building codes, not zoning. We can mandate, um, areas for recycling. I think we could have an ordinance that required all multi-family, um, businesses, et cetera, to, um, provide, um, recycling. I think we could do that. I think that would be within the zoning purview. Um,
For new.
For new. Yeah.
So take, take a hypothetical case. Uh, I was reading this, uh, agenda for today, uh, quality sixteen. One of the ideas is apartment, whatever, right? Hypothetical case. I'm not saying this is right, this is. Can we introduce some of these things that best, best practices that you just mentioned and many more into that particular, uh, case?
Because it is a P U D, we can, at this point.
At this point, okay.
Well, when they come, win with a site plan. Um, I, right now, we're just discussing uses with them. Um, we've talked about, um, you know, uh, meeting our um, carbon neutrality goals. Um, but when they come in with the site plan, we certainly, that's, um, a, a time. The issue is, we don't have it in our ordinances at this point in time. That's what this ten thousand dollar proposal is, um, to go through, you know, with our consultant and, because Doug's time, you know, is two days a week here. And we know how long it's taken to get the P U D going. We're going to have, if we want to attempt these, it's probably going to take several years to get through all of our ordinances with an ordinance update. So, um, now, we could do it all within Doug's time and take ten years, or we can request that he, you know, engage more of his staff to do that. Now, that doesn't say that we don't get that support from the Environmental Task Force, who have already done a whole bunch of thing on collecting a bunch of EV charging ordinances. Here's some research done. Here's, um, some research on, you know, recommendations on bikes and storage from other municipalities, you know, that kind of thing. So there's some volunteer support, but it's still our professional consultant's time to take on these issues. And I just want to go back to the Jackson Road corridor study. We've talked about that a couple times.
Have we?
Yeah. Um, one of, we were hoping that there would be more of a discussion tonight with Mandy talking about her placemaking.
Oh.
And how, how do we apply that to Jackson Road? Got it.
Residential, gotcha.
Right.
So this is the first big push for it.
I got you.
Couldn't we have like an ordinance committee? Like what do we, what in our ordinance do we need to change to allow individuals to do on their parcels, things that would make Sci-O greener? Whatever, whatever, brainstorm it and then are there ordinance, what, what does our ordinance need to be tweaked in our development chapter? And then, um,
Yep.
There's a, there's a review process that's underway.
I know, but
And, and maybe that's one of the next ones that's up is, is our, I don't know.
Jan and Chain and Mr., and Mr. Luhan are on the committee that we've been looking at ordinances. And that's why you have the P U D language that came out of that.
Okay.
It's been a slow process.
Chop, chop.
Yeah.
Staff up, right?
Yeah, staff up. Yeah, and, 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 and right now, it's been, you know, it's, it's sort of, um, without Doug being able to take on, uh, other staff, it just takes a very long time because all of his time that's committed, you know, to the township is kind of booked. And so that's what we're saying is accessing resources. Now, it, this may have gotten, I'm, I'm just trying to communicate the, the requests that we made. And I don't know, because you can't, even you can't look at the budget. It's four hundred thousand dollars. Okay, what, how, what, what, yeah, put it in.
Well, I'm looking at the line items and I don't see that. But what occurs to me about the Jackson Road corridor and anything else that sort of fits into that area is that's the DDA.
Yes.
And that's a pot of money. Um, unfortunately, we, the DDA Board met today and, um, sent its budget recommendation for the fiscal year. So sort of missed the window for putting it in the budget request, but that doesn't mean you can't add it later as a budget amendment. So, um, it seems like, at least for something like that, part of it, that component partnering with the DDA might be a good road.
So that's why we need to have this planning category where all of us are talking together. Yeah, so we're not siloed and that we're, you know, at a
Yeah, it's just
A, a certain level. And it's time and, yeah. And just understanding what each group is trying to
Yes, I completely understand what you're doing. And I, I just wanted to say, I, I appreciate you bringing, trying to bring it all together, Madam Chair. Because in several conversations that we've had, there's just all these little silos over here. Um, transportation is a good, good example of that, and nobody's in charge and things could
Still, there is a bigger way though with the DDA because the DDA has been working on an update of its plan.
Okay.
And one of the things that I learned today that, um, the only thing that really sort of, um, restricts a DDA beyond sort of the, the boundaries of it is its plan. So as long as something is in its plan, the DDA's plan,
Uh-huh.
um, then it's fair game. Um, and so I think maybe that's a good target, especially for something like the,
Mm-hmm.
the Jackson Road corridor project. But maybe other things too, because the DDA happens, that district happens to align with where the township could put the most density.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Because that's where the water and sewer are. So if, if part of this is to increase, um, density of housing, then partnering with the DDA, I think is a good way to go.
Do we have a liaison on the DDA?
And there, we were brought up whether we're
Because that's, that feels like
Voting member?
DDA is over here operating on its own.
Jay, Jay used to be the, the bridge between the DDA and planning, and now he's not. Um, so, um, I guess we should think about how to keep that.
Yeah, because I think we posed, yeah, because we posed whether he was, that was an appointment, um, versus someone who just can attend the DDA meetings. If, so the question is whether we have a, an actual role and vote, or if we just have a, a liaison who kind of attends meetings. Um, you know, what is the, yeah.
It's not a heavy lift. It's every two months. Um, you just have to remember, it's this one.
Is it voting member or is it participant?
Yeah, and is there any reporting or how does that work? Maybe, yeah, because
I think it, it makes sense, especially if, um, planning is, is being more proactive, um, with these sustainability measures. Um, to, to at least have someone there sort of, uh,
Because don't our tax dollars support the DDA?
Um, not only are tax dollars here in Sci-O Township, but it's, the DDA is capturing through tax increment financing, tax dollars that might otherwise leave, um, Sci-O Township and go to other entities like the county or washout community.
Oh. They get that.
Well, no, I've said this to you before. I'd be interested in being on that DDA. I feel like that's a sort of, we need to, we need to be working together.
With the DDA. Mm-hmm.
I'll support that.
Then we also with the DDA?
We'd have to, we'd have to figure it out because right now there's not a vacancy on the DDA, um, so.
Yeah, so we have to kind of figure that, that out. But maybe what we can do is, is there, I mean, should we
But you certainly are wanting to attend and
Yeah, I'm just thinking, how do we have a discussion with the community about Jackson Road?
Well, you, you can
Request it?
You can request it. I mean, you know, the, the DDA is pretty open-minded, um, to, you know, collaborating with other parts of the township government. It's not like it's a
Put that on the list of priorities.
Yep. Why, actually, they're on, they're on the, that list in the, taking out the silos under planning. DDA is under the planning section. Um, so then there, then there were, there were two other, um, things. There, the, um, recycling group, um, has that proposal for expanding the recycling. And I know that didn't make it into the budget because when I looked at recycling, it was, it was safe there.
Yeah, well, it's because we've had it every year and it just hasn't gone anywhere, partly because we've had such a difficult time working out how it would work with Recycling and Arbor. Recycling and Arbor is now at the Cal, the former Calvert site, and we were trying to figure out how to do it. They didn't want to bring it back to
The township, right.
Now, recently I learned that actually GFL offers this as a option to communities. So, um, when, if we wanted to go that direction and we have, again, um, collections, um, scheduled behind Township Hall, we could do that with GFL. So that's another option.
Well, maybe it's an option to look at both of those, what that would look like versus doing it at Calvert.
For, you know, you do both. I mean, you know, it, it, the problem that, uh, we kept bumping up against is that Recycling and Arbor had a specific way that they wanted to, you know, collect revenue for this program. And we, we weren't sure whether it was duplicating efforts, um, with what were, people are already paying for through their residential pickup.
Right, right, right. Well, but at least now, GFL has an option and, uh, Recycling and Arbor has an option. We have two options to review. Yeah, but we don't have anything in the budget for it.
Well, maybe, or maybe it's a matter of sort of targeting where the gaps are in our GFL residential pickup. And you pointed out earlier that Sci-O Farms doesn't have pickup. Maybe there's a, maybe the, the goal is to create, um, a drop-off station in Sci-O Farms.
Actually, the
They have one in the works.
Yeah, actually, it's in the works. So there are some really specific proposals that are coming up, um, from that. And that's, and the, the thirty, so forty thousand dollars was what, uh, was running on an ongoing Calvert's drop-off for
Sci-O Township.
For Sci-O Township. Yeah, so for folks who didn't have access, um, to recycling or
Or those things that were picked up by GFL.
Like styrofoam.
Yeah, yes, the things that GFL doesn't process.
Right. So anyway, that, so that was, I could tell that that didn't make it in the budget. And then, um, the other, um, recommendation was, um, updating our engineering specifications, and that was from O H M. They said it had been a long chunk of time since they updated the township, um, and, um, it, so this isn't just sustainability, but it's just current standards, um, and, and I think that threw a number of ten thousand dollars at that, so.
Well, the, the, we, we should be clear that the budget that I'm looking at here is a draft.
Mm-hmm.
Um, tomorrow night is the public hearing on the budget. So if there's
That's why we're having this discussion to help our, our
Right, so everyone should come and tell us the links that are missing, um, and
Well, and it is hard to tell if the planning budget has been, um, increased, then maybe some of these things were in. But it was hard when I, you know, you, you say, you know, these are the things we're thinking about, but there isn't feedback on, great, we got those, they're in the draft budget here or there.
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see them, obviously. So I think it's Yeah, I don't see, I don't see them obviously, so I think it's, I think it would be good to come and say, where are these things that we talked about?
And, and also counting on our trustee representative, too.
Well, this is his first place.
Yeah, and then, then the other thing that, so engineering update and then um, I think that Oc- October event, it'd be really easy to get sponsors for. I don't think, you know, the township would necessarily have to, other than provide space. Um, which always involves cleanup, but we could get some volunteers to help with that. Yeah, go ahead.
Got a simple, three, oversimpla, oversimpla fa- question about the budget. So, did you say the budget amount was roughly four hundred thousand dollars? Right, something like that?
Four or three, maybe four, yes.
And then, yeah. Did you also say that the year to date was under three hundred thousand?
Yes, he said that.
So there isn't a hundred thousand dollars budgeted to play with that we never use every year? I, I, I don't know that I would, I'm in the position to make that generalization, but there does seem to be a gap there and I can't explain it.
Well, we got two weeks to spend a hundred K guys, or we don't.
So, so I'm wondering, I'm wondering, I'm wondering, Jan, if we, even if we don't get specific budget numbers in.
We don't, we don't. Right.
If there's a hundred thousand dollars more, that would be more than enough. We could, we could, we could put in budget requests once we had more specifics
To take care of these things.
to say, this is how.
We'd like to spend those funds.
We would like to spend. We need to give it to township or give it to. It just seems like more.
As long as we have a, a pot of funds that we can request from for special projects.
So are we saying get a contract in place in the, the next two weeks? Is that what I just heard? It's for, for.
Sure. No, all, all you have to do is you have the number in there and then later on you come and say, we, now we would like to have authorization to spend from this category of money that was set in the budget.
My mistake, I thought this was money that's going to expire in two weeks.
Oh, well, you can just say, please roll over this much, um, or, I, you know, I.
Maybe we are rolling over some with that.
I, I don't know that it's, I, I'm not sure.
We don't know the process.
Looking at this, you know, that's the way to approach this. It might be better to just say, we'd like to put this much in this category.
That's what I was thinking of the contraind.
Yeah, yeah.
If we spent two seventy-three and they're budgeting four hundred thousand, unless we've got some big bills that have, we spent recently, I think we should be okay, right?
Sounds like it.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Usually there's some margin built into um the, all of the budgets because the thing you don't want, I mean, all of the funds within the budget, because the thing that you don't wanna do is, is overspend. At the end of the fiscal year, you don't wanna have too, you know, be over budget. That's the bad thing. You'd rather, you'd rather budget too much and then come in under uh than be in that position at the end of the fiscal year.
Like we are now.
Like we are now. See, what a good job we did this year. Um, okay, then, uh, just a couple other items were, um, we, uh, the idea would be to have some interns again, like we did um a couple summers ago, to especially push, plan for that October event. We're talking about how do we get a lot of this information to the HOAs? Many of them meet in the summertime. Um, they could be, uh, we could uh also use them to do some training or, and get that ambassador team, you know, trained and, well, recruit volunteers, train volunteers to sort of be the um sustainable SIO ambassadors, to connect people with the solarized programs, the rain garden programs, the um com- how to compost programs. The, all of those programs that get, exist. It's getting people out there and getting to get our community, you know, excited about those and aware about them and the benefits.
So, you know, Jan, I'm hearing you on that, but I'm struggling with this whole list of budget stuff. And I don't even, um, I mean, it's a small amount of money, eight thousand, ten thousand dollars. Um, this is not something you're looking for us to take action on tonight?
No, I, what I'm trying to do is, one, inform our, our representative to the trustees, so he can be an advocate. It looks like, you know, if, if we, we have, we only spent under three hundred thousand and we have four hundred thousand dollars next year. I mean, we have some ability to do some special projects. It'd be great if we had like a special projects budget or a projects, you know, budget that we knew we could control and we knew how much it was, you know, rather than.
And you do that ordinance update, but.
Yeah, an ordinance update budget, you know, uh, yeah, whatever. He bet the planning commission could then manage um for special projects. That would be really helpful. Just a line item there, so we know what we have and we can budget accordingly. That'd be great.
Yeah, well, I think you'd still have to go.
We'd still have to get authority to get to spend it.
To get authority, but yeah, yeah, if you, if you, you know, if you have a line item, you know, here's, here's what we're, we could spend up to.
But we couldn't help manage. Right.
Exactly.
For these purposes, I think that makes sense. It's just, I, somehow, somehow this has, that all this stuff that you've been talking about this tonight, you have to
Yeah.
Prove it, still has to come from the system.
have a, a figure attached to it somewhere in the budget and I just went through and I couldn't see it.
Mm-hmm, right, and it may have just been lumped into the overall planning one. I don't.
But only if it's in like consulting and it could be.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, it's possible, but um I'm not sure that that's where it belongs.
It could be in the. Book normal. Mm-hmm.
You need to see the raw numbers behind that.
But it, yeah, and that's what's hard, you know, it to, and, and that's a part of the budgeting process, you know, when the people ask you for to, you know, your input and then say, here's the budget, we want your response to the budget. It's really hard to do that when you, you, you don't, yeah.
Want me to?
You, you don't, it's hard to get that feedback. Um, okay, so that, that was it. The other thing we wanna really support is how do we deal with our communications? And, you know, one, expanding the use of our website, um, and staff to be able to it's spooky, um, you know, uh, you know, for all levels of the township, um, so.
Achieve what? What, what is that communication? Achieve what? What are, what is the objective here?
So for instance, it'd be really nice if, uh, um, well, thi- this is what some other communities do. They have like an e-newsletter, it's a listserv. People can sign up, you know, for it. Uh, we are, the uh Environmental Sustainability Task Force has H O A contacts. Um, the fire department has business contacts. You know, we could put together um and do better communications out um to folks about planning issues. Wouldn't it be great if the, the um website would post when an application came in? Uh, a lot of um townships and cities, you can go in and find out.
Brilliant.
Um, you know, what applications are, and people have said it'd be nice to get more notice. Well, you know, if you pushed out to the HOAs or to people who could subscribe for a listserv and wanted to know if there was a project. Um, it mo- a lot of municipalities use their websites that way. Um, you, um, you can go in in Ann Arbor and find um, uh, any submittal um for any project um on their website.
We have a website already.
Yeah, but we haven't.
Utilize it.
We don't have the capability set up.
We haven't fully utilized it and we don't have the staff right now to be able to use it in that way. So two issues, one is.
Okay. Staff and one is, what do you wanna do with the staff? Am I right?
I think, I think the intent of the I T position that we're currently integrating for is that that individual would be able to help with some of this stuff.
That'd be great.
I mean, everybody wants communications to be better and so if that would help.
So, yeah, well, I, I thought that was good because I don't think the planning commission has ever talked money. And, you know, and, you know, to think about what we wanna try and accomplish next year um is, is kind of tied to that. So thank you for sticking with it. We spent the entire time on this.
We needed it, looks like.
Yes, and, and then, uh, one of the things is, you know, as we're, we're thinking about, I'm trying to get all of, you know, all the planning elements talking to each other. I mean, we have representatives kind of, but, you know, are there some certain times of the year that we could do some strategic planning together? Um, you know, like the Pro's Plan. All of a sudden, oh, I gotta go to the Pro's Open House cause I, you know. But how can you be more strategic about it? Yeah, I'm thinking about Carlotta Wartman, it's a consultant for, um, you know, the, um, the Pro's Plan and some other things, but I don't know. Maybe there's more efficiency that we can do and really um be more intentional in what, you know, how we achieve it. If we look at that, you, you know, the whole planning process, which you said, the D D A is a part of that planning process. Transportation is, the pathways are. You know, how do we, um, you know?
Unsilom it.
Yeah, and, and we've kind of just clunked everybody together and we really need a, you know, sort of this planning umbrella. Um, and so that's what I'm trying to, you know, kind of think through. So we have this planning, we have our real.
We could do something informal to start with and then, and then come up with a more formal approach, but I think, you know, the D D A is an obvious partner for a lot of what you're talking about today. And they actually have more of a budget than, um, than most of the, of the commissioners.
Yeah. Okay, who wants to go talk sustainability to the D D A? I think I can do that. Come from a, a, efficiency and kind of, I mean, wouldn't it? I mean, the whole.
I think you need to handle that for sure.
But, that would be, that would be fun. It, even, that's what I'm, I keep, um, you know, trying to figure out, how can we integrate this process because I think there's a lot of, I mean, certainly for the land preservation and, and, um, you know, the whole idea of composting, a lot of people are doing those things that, you know, looking at E Vs and, and so.
There's a lot of people in SIO Township who are doing those things who would, I love the opportunity to sort of share, uh, you know, the good news.
To share.
Compost on my property.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm even trying this lomi thing that will work. Okay, well, anyway, I think that's good. I, um, thank you for your report. I think it's, it's getting late. If there's cer- key, there are a couple key things.
But you muted or no? I got a printed, edited copy.
I read it.
Any questions, John?
Thank you.
Thank you. That's very good.
I got it.
So you can stop sharing.
Yeah, oh. Oh, there's Rob Pattinson, I can get his hand up.
Oh, I see Rob. So, I mean, I think you're, you're able to talk. I never, I never muted you.
Oh. Okay, card meeting and with Debbie Dingle on Thursday, was that it?
Well, no, it's Debbie Dingle's having a, a community open house.
Oh, yeah.
And uh she sent the invite to the current membership and then it's been shared. That's what Rob's doing.
Okay. Great, thank you. All right, thank you very much. All right, um, what's that?
Oh, thanks, Rob.
And then the only other sustainability um, um, item was, um, Norm Roller who has, he joined the Natural Ecosystems Group. Um, he does um this kind of satellite mapping and has uh, uh, some really interesting skills. Um, and kind of how you use technology um to do, you know, inventories and, and so forth. And it's sort of like a, you know, what's possible. Um, and then how do you tie that in with the G I S? So, uh, I think he's a, definitely an asset to the um, uh, task force. And then Elizabeth Laporte, she recently retired um from the Graham Sustainability Institute. And she is uh very interested in giving back to the township and she ran um, uh, a bunch of student teams that did uh projects throughout um, uh, the, the community, um, and has a um sustainability background. So, um, I'd like to propose that um we nominate, uh, approve both of those for members of the Environmental Sustainability Task Force.
We appoint them.
I move.
Yeah, the planning commission.
We requested the.
Nope, we, we're in charge of that one.
I move that we appoint Norm Roller and Elizabeth Laporte to this environmental ta- sustainability task force.
I would support that.
Okay, motion, uh, the motion by Commissioner Moore is supported by Commissioner Hyde. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much.
Move to adjourn?
Smart.
Or are we gonna do reports?
If anybody has any specific, um.
Just a request to be updated for reports.
Yes.
Here's the, this was part of the packet.
Right, and it was, they, they didn't get it. I, I read.
It's just like perform a list of people who might be giving reports.
Well, it's, I think it's, I Xed out fire services cause that's gone now, right?
Well, yeah, except they got some big amount.
Okay. So they don't X it out yet? I think, I think it's all set.
They don't. That's in rec advisory, Warren.
Well, that was, that was, oh, the last one that I sent in was not.
Close.
Gets closer every. Yeah, put that in. Yeah.
Move to adjourn?
This.
Support. Right, right.
Support. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned at.